At this time, I will call the meeting to order. And I will also give the indication if you would like to stand with me, please. Gracious Father in heaven, we come before you tonight to give you thanks for all things good and great. We thank you for being with our students, our staff, our faculty, and our community. We pray that you will give everyone in this organization the wisdom to do what is right and to go forward in the name of your son. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I am a member of the superintendent's board of members, a member of the superintendent's commission, a member of the commission, a member of the council, and a member of the district.
At this time, we will have Superintendent's Holiday Card Winners' Presentation.
Good evening, everyone. We are going to do something a little new this evening. Let's check in on our guests. Can y'all hear us at the board meeting? Thumbs up if you can hear us. Thumbs up, alright. So, we got a little bit of feedback. We try to... So far, we're doing good. So, students, hey, you see our board members, right? Bear with this, we're doing this 2020 style. So, let's start with the process itself. We had students submit their artwork for the Superintendent's Winter Card Committee. They met to select the winners. The committee did not know anything about the students or the school that this artwork came from, so they were judged based solely on what was in front of them. And we are looking at, I see the Bland family, Zoe Bland is one of our recipients and our winners. We're going to show her artwork in just a second. First, the K-12, K through second grade category is Isaac Perry from Jesse May Monroe Elementary School. And then grades three through five, we have Zoe Bland, who we just referenced, from Jesse May Elementary School. Grades nine through 12, Giovanni Rodriguez from West Brunswick High School, which she has represented. And then also from North Brunswick High School, we have Deisha Chaney in the category grades nine through 12. So, I'm going to share a screen, guys, and let's show off your artwork. So, first up, we have Isaac Perry, Jesse May Monroe. Happy holidays. Looks like we've got Santa Claus with Rudolph and the reindeer doing a little surfing. That's how we do it here on the East Coast. Next up, we've got Zoe Bland, Jesse May Monroe. Check it out. Looks like we've got a special visitor in the slate. Lots of presents there, too. Nice work, Zoe. Giovanni Rodriguez, West Brunswick High School. There we go. A little more, we've got a snowman, got the signature carrot as a nose. I bet that snowman was saying, "Y'all smell carrots?" And finally, Deisha Chaney from North Brunswick High School, scorpions. And we are looking at a beautiful winter wonderland with bunny rabbits right there in the corner. So, let's bring back our crew one more time. Alicia Williams, Principal Williams, representing Jesse May Monroe as well. Thank y'all for joining us. What you're seeing, you can't see, you see the board members. A round of applause for our Superintendent's Winter Card winners. They will be, y'all will be, just so you know, you'll be receiving some of your own cards to send out to family members and friends. We also have a board, a school board certificate of appreciation and a big old congratulations that'll be coming to you. So, thank y'all for joining us and keep up that talented work, y'all.
And before you guys sign off, I wanted to say congratulations to all of you as well. These Christmas cards, I will actually send to my superintendent colleagues across the state. So, your cards will be going all across the different school districts in North Carolina. So, again, thank you for that and congratulations on your award.
And I'd like to say thank you to all of our young artists and also to their instructors. Awesome job. You make Brunswick County schools proud.
Alrighty, guys, and that is going to conclude. We'll give them a one-bye. Bye. Alright, that concludes our Winter Card winner recipients.
Thank you, Ms. Milligan.
Thank you, Daniel. Under Presentations, the comprehensive annual financial report will be shared at the committee meeting later in the month. And we now have the teacher's voice, Ms. Bryan.
Well, good evening again. Good evening, Board members. It's Dr. Oats, Superintendent's Cabinet. I want to give a special welcome to our new board members who will be sworn in this evening, and a special thank you to Ms. Milligan, Mrs. Cook, for your time and your years of service to Brunswick County students and staff. Tonight, the teacher's voice shines a spotlight on Union Elementary's Holly Westfall. In her third grade classroom, Ms. Westfall challenges her students to be problem solvers and change makers. But this month, her students take the lead and have a special challenge for others.
there is. So, they use it with math and they use it with a daily problem where they have to define the problem, they have to storm different solutions, they have to come up with a plan, and then from their plan, they have to design and test it and see if it's going to work, and then revise it. So, we eat a lot in a lot of what we do. But I've tried to give them a lot of real-world challenges. So, for example, when we were doing the AABB schedule and I wanted to meet students in my class, I said, "All right, guys, we're getting ready to have everybody in our class. So, this week, we're going to come up with a plan sometime that will make school a safe place for students to return." And they were so wonderful. They made these masks with little plastic shields so you could see their smiles. They made sticks to measure six feet apart. They made little signs with, you know, telling all the things that need to be responsible. Some of them made a little chain to go around their neck to hold masks. So, I was really excited about how inventive and creative they were, you know, and that's the wonderful thing about kids. If we give them the power and the freedom to think freely, then they can come up with these wonderful ideas. So, we just have to challenge them. And with my own individual class, I've really been trying to work with them to see if they can be leaders at our school. So, they're getting ready to initiate something called the Dolphin December Kindness Challenge. And they did a great job of coming up with different challenges that were things that we could actually do, you know, during these times during the pandemic. So, they made a whole list of 31 different activities that kids do, and we typed it up as a checklist, and they made their own bulletin board, and they're going to do their own little public service announcement to share it with the students. But I really feel like it's important for them to take ownership of projects like these. So, they are so excited. They read about something in Scholastic News about doing a kind challenge, and they were like, "Oh, do this at our school." They have just taken on the role, and they're so excited about it, they want to count and see how many people participate and announce in January, you know, how many acts of kindness that the student... So, instead of being random acts of kindness, these are intentional acts of kindness. So, I think it's a great project for them.
And then, Ms. Westfall's students wanted to share their own invitation with all Brunswick County school students, but with the board as well.
Our class read about Giving Tuesday, and we decided to take action, but we didn't want to do something for only one day, so instead, we created the December Kindness Challenge. Good morning, students of Brunswick County. We have a challenge for you. During the month of December, we want all of the students in Brunswick County's elementary schools to participate in the December Kindness Challenge. What is a December Kindness Challenge? We will tell you all about it.
It is a list of 31 challenges for you to complete during the month of December. See how many activities you can complete. You can do it in any order.
Here are a few of our favorites. Compliment a classmate, write a thank you note to a staff member, smile with your eyes while you're in the hall.
Make a card for your principals, ask three people about the day.
Make a bookmark for a special teacher or a teacher assistant. Make a card for someone at a local retirement home.
Ask someone new to play with you at recess. Make a homemade present for somebody special.
These are just a few ideas of what you can do. The last one lets you pick the act of kindness.
It's easy to participate.
Check off the activities you do.
Just fill out the form and return it to your school by January 8.
We hope that you will join us. We hope that you will join us. We hope that you will join us in the Kindness Challenge.
So, I hope that you all will join Ms. Westfall's third grade class, Union Elementary School Dolphins, and all of Brunswick County schools' elementary students in having a kind December. I look forward to sharing the results with you in the new year.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bryan.
Next, we have a special occasion to take care of, and I will leave that. As we all know, this is a special night, and we will be welcoming three new board members. But at the same time, two of our board members will be leaving us. So, I would ask that Chairman Milligan, Mrs. Cook, if you would join in as well.
I would regret as Superintendent if I did not take an opportunity to just publicly thank both of you for your service, for your leadership, for your friendship, as I've been in a couple of roles, three roles, actually, during the time that you have served as board members, from coming in as human resources director to associate superintendent and now superintendent. Your leadership, friendship, and just your good-natured personal attributes have helped not only me, helped the staff, and helped Brunswick County schools as a whole. And I cannot express enough thanks and gratitude for everything that you've done. We laugh together, we have cried together, we have gone through COVID together. So, it is, we have made some lasting memories, and I can honestly say that when I first got here, Ms. Cook was one of the first board members that I met with and can talk to. And I can say without a shadow of doubt, her heart has been with the students and staff of Brunswick County schools. And as Ms. Milligan came on, I will not hesitate to say that as we have moved from the first year until now, she was Ms. Milligan, the board member. What I call her now is Mama L. And I'm not ashamed to let folks know that. So, I will definitely miss Mama L, and I call her her natural children, my siblings. So, that's how that works. So, before you go, I just want to present you with a two-piece gift. And I say that because when I picked these up, I thought it was one piece. Just be careful with this. And this is for Ms. Milligan, L.G. Milligan, Brunswick County Board of Education, honoring your dedication to education and four years of distinguished service. And along with that, you will have your own portrait of your colleagues. And also for this, and in brief, Chairman B. Cook, Brunswick County Board of Education, honoring your dedication to education and 12 years of distinguished service. Thank you so much. And you also get the portrait.
Well, y'all know I have to say something. When I started 12 years ago, all my children were in school, and now all of them are out of school. They're all graduates of Brunswick County schools, two from Early College High School and two from West Brunswick. Three of them are here in the audience with me. One of them, y'all, get to keep because she's now a teacher for Brunswick County schools. And at one time, I remember there were four different schools we had to go to, and how we did that, I don't know, but anyway, we survived. When I first came on the board, you know, my idea was change, 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 change. It's going to change everything. And maybe some things have changed, but it takes a long time to really see a lot of change. But there have been a lot of good things that have happened, you know, while I've been here on the board. So, the most delightful times are spent, obviously, with students and teachers and the events, everything from the military halls to field days to Special Olympics, science Olympia. But the greatest accomplishments and achievements are always seen at graduation. And that, to me, is always the highlight of the year, to see all the classes graduating. And I can say that I've been to every single graduation for 12 years, and this year was the first time that we couldn't shake everybody's hand and congratulate them or hug them, but nevertheless, we had a graduation. And I must tell you, we had a graduation compared to a lot of counties across the state that are still waiting to have graduations. They've never had it. So, I'm just thankful that our administration was very proactive and very forthcoming in having a plan for that. They've had a plan for everything. They really have. So, one of the things that I wanted to share with Dr. Oats, a lot of times, he might feel like he's hanging out on a cliff, so I got him a little cliff bar. Of course, it's chocolate chip, as anybody wants to know. Now, Ms. Cahill is not here, but we always look forward to her when payday comes around. So, we'll have to give that to Ms. Cahill. And Ms. Molly White, she's always in charge of making sure everybody's a smarty, making sure all of the lesson plans and everything are in here for all of y'all. And then, Ms. Cheers, he's got to make sure that everything's great with athletics and all, so he gets a big shoe. Got to make sure he's got that. And then, Ms. Rottler, she's got to make sure everything's okay with the buildings and all that, so I got her a build-a-snowman chocolate bar, so she can build her own chocolate snowman. And for the new board members and the two existing ones, you know, a lot of times, this can be a really challenging, but a very rewarding, not want to say job, but it's a, to me, I took it on as a service to the community. And a lot of times, you got to learn that draw between the lines, but in case you don't do, I have you some ultra-clean, washable, large spray-ons. So, in case you go out of the lines, you can erase sometimes. But a lot of times, you got to make sure you do the right thing the first time. One of the things that I like this quote says, "What's popular is not always right, but what's right is not always popular." And another thing that I said on this quote, it says, "Sometimes the hardest thing and the right thing are the same." So, I just wish all of y'all success. I thank you for the time that y'all allowed me to be on the board. And everybody knows that if you ever really have a problem, just grab a chocolate chip cookie, it'll solve all the rest of problems.
I'm just going to say a couple of things. This is actually, this is the culmination of four years of board, that's me. This is actually the culmination of 33 years in education. It's been a pleasure to have served all the students of Brunswick County. It has been a pleasure to have worked with my esteemed colleagues in this particular situation. And it has been a pleasure to have worked with all the staff, the students, the faculty, and the community of Brunswick County. I am honored to have been allowed to do so. Thank you very much.
for our new board members. We will have the Honorable Jason C. Disbro, Superior Court Judge for District 13B, and he will administer the oath for Mr. Harry E. Lemon Jr., Mr. Stephen Barker, Ms. Robin Moffett.
And Dr. Oats, I think I'm also going to do it for Mr. Robinson as well.
And for Mr. Robinson.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to administer the oath of office for four board members, three of which will be new board members. Mr. Lemon, are you first this evening?
Yes.
So, Lemons, if you will repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Harry Lemon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
Support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the Brunswick County Board of Education.
As a member of the Brunswick County Board of Education.
So, help me out. Glad to have you back, sir. Mr. Stephen Barker?
Barker, if you will, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Anybody else to come up?
I'm ready.
Come on up.
She's trying to steal your job already.
I state your name.
I speak of Barker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As a member of the Brunswick County Board of Education.
As a member of the Brunswick County Board of Education.
So, help me out.
So, help me out.
Congratulations. Excellent. Good luck.
If you repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Robin Moffett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the Brunswick County Board of Education.
As a member of the Brunswick County Board of Education.
So, help me out.
So, help me out.
You ready, Mr. Robinson?
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, David Robinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As a member of the Brunswick County Board of Education.
As a member of the Brunswick County Board of Education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
At this time, we'll have a 10-minute break. Congratulations, board members. The organizational meeting of the Board of Education has been called to order. We have a quorum present. One of the purposes of this meeting is the election of board officers. The first order of business is the election of the chair. Just as a reminder, nominations do not require a second, and no motion is needed to close the nomination. Do I hear nominations for the office of board chair?
Mrs. Superintendent, I'd like to nominate Mr. Lemon to be the chairman of the board.
Are there any other nominations for chair? If there are no other nominations for chair, I will call for a vote, all in favor of Mr. Ed Lemon as board chair. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Lemon. You are, to let the record show, that Mr. Lemon has been duly nominated and elected as the chairman of the Brunswick County Board of Education for a one-year term, with a unanimous vote.
Thank you, fellow board members, for your faith in me. I'll try to carry this job out as best I can. So the next item is to elect a vice chair. May I have any nominations for vice chair?
Mr. Lemon, I would like to nominate Steve Barker.
Mr. Barker has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? If not, please say yes or no on your nomination for Mr. Barker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Barker. Let the record show that Mr. Barker has been elected as vice chair. At this time, we have on the agenda to approve the meeting agenda. Are there any suggestions to the agenda? If not, we will, we're open to a...
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion for approval. Mr. Benton makes the motion to approve the agenda. We have a second from Mr. Barker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So the agenda's approved. I believe you have received through email the minutes of November 10 and 16. Are any questions about those agendas? And I know that that's kind of tough when most of our board was not a part of those meetings, but are there any questions? Anybody see anything?
Mr. Chairman, I would just go to you and Mr. Benton on their accuracy, and I will vote to approve if you guys agree on their accuracy.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Mr. Benton to approve the minutes. Mr. Barker seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The action items for approval, are you going over that, Mr. Foster? Beginning, who's going to go over that? Beginning teacher, okay. So the item up is beginning teacher support program.
Yes, good evening. Congratulations, Chair, Vice Chair, and to our new school board members, welcome. It's nice to meet you. I am Jen Damon, the Executive Director of Professional Development and of Elementary Education, but I am also the district beginning teacher coordinator. So this evening, I am seeking board approval for the 2021 Beginning Teacher Support Program Plan. The submission for state approval is December 15th. You have a copy of the 2021 Brunswick County Schools Beginning Teacher Support Program Plan, as well as the handbook that serves as an additional resource and a guide to support our beginning teachers, our mentors, and our school coordinators. The State Board of Education recently approved a policy addition for the Beginning Teacher Program Support Plans, and part of that is documentation that we have to identify and verify our beginning teachers. That is included in our plan and is all ready to go with the completion of the recent graduate surveys that the beginning teacher does, as well as the employer survey by the principal of the school during that BT's first year of teaching, all of which to meet the requirements to measure the performance of the educator preparation program. The goal of our Brunswick County Schools Beginning Teacher Support Program continues to be focused on expansion and support of guidance provided to our beginning teachers, which is aligned with our Here We Grow Brunswick County Schools strategic plan. The expansion of support to this year's 2021 Brunswick County Schools Beginning Teacher Support Program is with virtual and remote professional development, as well as support for remote teaching and learning. So currently, where are we with our plan? We are in full implementation, as outlined in the plan that you have. Our year-one residency licensed teachers and our beginning teachers completed their beginning of the year, a new teacher orientation and induction, which was provided virtually, and right after we had some severe weather. So we had not only COVID, but severe weather, and they had a great opportunity to not only be engaged in learning remotely, but also to practice and use those digital tools and resources during their training. The remote learning was also intertwined into other activities, like their scavenger hunt, which they looked up our Brunswick County Schools Remote Learning Plan, as well as their own schools' remote learning plan. The quarterly fall beginning teacher survey was given at the end of the first quarter. I used that information when I planned their professional development for the month of December. Their top five choices as beginning teachers, and their preference for what they wanted to have for professional development, were using assessments to guide instruction, social emotional support for teachers, social and emotional learning, classroom management, and time management. So they have the month of December to do that, and as of tonight, we've had 13 beginning teachers already completed at least one module, and we have a couple of it to two or three modules. So they are getting the support that they're asking for at the time when they need it. So I'm very excited about that. Currently, we have just over 100 beginning teachers in years one, two, and three. We have 100 trained mentors, 85 which are serving as active mentors to our beginning teachers, and we have our 20 site-based school coordinators. I want to give a shout out because our BTs are doing an awesome job. They're persevering through such a time as this, and our mentors, school coordinators, and our school administrators are all jumping in with support. So tonight, I am recommending board approval of the 2021 Beginning Teacher Support Program Plan.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Damon? And I know that was quick and all brand new. Yeah.
Did I understand there was a state mandated timeframe with this? Was there a state mandated timeframe for this?
Yes, it's due to the state by December 15th.
You know, this program is good when you see it in writing. The pitfalls of it, of course, the pitfalls in most things that are put in writing plans and so forth and so on. The pitfalls I see, the main pitfall is beginning teachers who really don't get the mentor they need. And I know that's individual principals, I guess, making that decision, who mentors whom?
Yes, the principals have a set of criteria that we receive, that they have to have certain criteria either on their teacher observation or in some form of documentation, if it's not on their NISI's observation forms. Then the principals have to have documentation to say, this is why this person, this teacher, is qualified to mentor. And then we can do changes. If it's not a perfect fit at the beginning of the school year, for whatever reason, they do have that flexibility of changing.
Is there a way to, I want, I guess evaluation is not the right term, but to, for the principal to tell what kind of job a mentor's doing?
There's multiple ways. They have a mentor log that they can really see what time is being spent on, and if it's meeting the need of that beginning teacher. We also encourage them to invite them in that dialogue about, you know, what are your goals for this year on your PDP, and how is your mentor supporting you in that? And then every quarter, I send out a survey that's sent to beginning teachers, then I have one separate for mentors and then school coordinators, so I get all the perspectives. And then if I see things on that survey from certain beginning teachers, I can share that with the principals, and then they know that this BT is not feeling like they're supported or may need extra support in some way.
You do that at the end of the year or during the year?
I do it at the end of every quarter.
Okay.
Yeah. So usually, right around that end of the marking period, I click the magic button and it all gets sent out, and then I share that with our school coordinators and principals.
Okay. Any other questions?
You have the ability to slide persons to a different mentor if they're uncomfortable, because a lot of personality, I think, when you come to teaching mentors and all that.
Yes, definitely, and we've done that several times this year. So our school coordinators that are school-based, they track those mentors. So a BT can really go to their school-based coordinator, they can reach out to me, and they do that both ways, order their principal. And once we hear something on either of our ends, then we say, okay, let's look at what we can do for that, what kind of support they need, and what would that look like and from whom. But we have done that several times throughout the year, last year and this year.
What kind of feedback are you getting from the mentors in terms of how well they feel that the BTs are, you know, dealing with this program so far?
Overall, it has just, compared to last year, they are feeling overwhelmed with what our mentor teachers do as part of their responsibilities during COVID, as well as supporting other teachers. So I think that's why when we look at seeing the social emotional support for teachers pop up, that was one that also popped up last year when I did my PBs in person. I met with BT1s in one group, BT2s in another, 3s, and then mentors. Across the board, even the mentors wanted that social emotional support for themselves. So that is really one thing that, when I saw it again this year, I'm like, okay, pulling out different resources, sharing it, and they have, all have access to that. So the beginning teachers, the mentors, and the school-based coordinators have access to that support.
And I know most of you, some of you don't know Ms. Damon. She's a former principal herself, and she understands this program very well, so we're lucky to have you working on that. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have a very strong team and the support from Mr. Foster and from Ms. White and from the board, so, and Dr. Oats in the cabinet. So I really appreciate the support that we have, because then that, they see our school coordinators, our mentors, our PTs, see that trickle-down effect. It's not just a plan on a piece of paper that we share out. And that's why I made that guide, that handbook... we share out. And that's why I made that guide, that handbook, to fill in some gaps. So it's not just the criteria that the state wants in a plan. It is actually, this is what we're living. This is a living document. And another thing is, it's in Google. So anytime I update that, I reshare it with school BT coordinators so they know, just made a change on page whatever. So it's very much a living document that we continue to change. I had no idea December PD would be the way that it turned out to be. And when I started to see the feedback, I just knew I had to adapt what I was going to do and adjust that to offer choice PD that really met the needs of what the BTs were asking. So throughout this whole plan, it is more than a piece of paper. I really focus on trying to meet the needs of our teachers, because I've lived it.
Yeah.
And we know that, you know, to build, to help our students grow, we need to help all educators grow, but especially our young BTs. If we think about our BTs in years two and three, they've had disruption of school calendar with severe weather and then COVID as well. So they haven't really had that normal school calendar year that other experienced teachers have had some, you know, fortunate years that we haven't had as many calendar changes.
Thank you.
One thing I've always said with plans and studies is the implementation is so important. I'm glad to see that you've been making updates to the plan and bringing it back and making sure the implementation is there, but also being able to refine it as you go. So good job to you and your staff as well.
And that also, once implementation is done by the board, you indicate, you somewhat answered my question, what degree of difficulty will it be to go back and make modifications and adjustments to the plan as we get feedback from stakeholders?
And I can do that at any time. It is, the state knows that it's a working document. Our Southeast Regional Contact very much knows it and has lived working, actually, she's from our district originally. So she has worked with our teachers in our district and has worked teachers and continues to work with teachers in literacy. So they are very much in tune with, you know, what we're experiencing, and we have to do what our teachers need. I think that's the whole premises for everything. We have to do what our teachers need.
Right. And that leads me to the next question or statement, rather. I just want to ensure that we're getting adequate feedback from the teachers who this affects. Make sure that, you know, we're listening to them and, you know, doing what we need to do to help them.
And that's why last year, when I started, last year was my first year as Beginning Teacher Coordinator, and I implemented the quarterly surveys for that fact. So it's anonymous when they send it in, but they can add any kind of comments at the end. And that's when I usually get some of those feelings come out. Or I say, on everything, you'll say, contact me if you need anything. I'm here to help. How can I support you? So very much trying to keep it open through the surveys, but also just through all of our contact together.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions and comments? Can we have a motion then to approve the Beginning Teacher Support Program? We have a motion to approve of Mr. Barger. We have a second?
Second.
We have a double second. So Mr. Robson approves, seconds that motion. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Steve, critical needs incentive. Mr. Foster.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me come to speak to you about this. My name is Stephen Foster. I'm the Chief Human Resource Officer. And just a couple of items before we get into this. One, I want to thank the board for the investment that you've been making in the employees of the school district. You've, just this year, you've increased the annual supplement by $500 for our teachers, and I'm thinking that that's making a difference. It's made us one of the highest in the Southeast in regards to our beginning teacher pay, and that is helping us through some of the difficulties that we're having. But this presentation today is in regards to critical staff recruitment, because there are certain areas that we are having some difficulty in filling staff, especially during the school year. And so with that, you guys asked us to take, asked the superintendent to take a look at what we could do to possibly enhance our recruiting ability in these areas. And I would just present to you today an option that we think would be helpful to us as we move forward. So it's a critical staff incentive, and what we are suggesting is to recruit teachers in hard-to-staff areas, and primarily that's in our math and EC areas, by providing a recruitment incentive, incentive of up to $2,500. And the way that we would propose that would be for math teachers, any newly hired teacher into a middle school or high school math position, they must be fully licensed or licensed in math and assigned to teach math at least 50% of their positions, because sometimes you'll have positions that are math, science, or something of that nature. For EC positions, we would provide this incentive for all new hires in EC positions, but they would have to be licensed in EC. The administration of it would be, we would suggest that they receive a $250 per month recruitment incentive for up to one year, or 10 months. So even if we approve this and we start this now in December, January, they would be eligible for the $250 per month for the last five months of this year, and then for the first five months of next year if they were to return. The incentive would stop if the employee were to go on a leave of absence or was on a performance plan, be that as a monitored or directed performance plan, then the monthly incentive would stop. To also give you an idea of the financial impact associated with this, if we were to provide a full $2,500 per year for each newly hired math and EC teacher, we currently have three EC vacancies and only, and one math vacancy. We would estimate that, based on what has occurred this fall, that we could possibly need to hire as many as six additional positions during the springtime. If we did that with 10 teachers at $250 a month and five months remaining in this school year, we're talking, including benefits and retirement, we're talking about an investment of right at $16,000 as an estimated investment to be able to provide this type of incentive to hire newly hired EC and math teachers. The advantages there, it would directly address the recruitment of new teachers in our highest need areas. The disadvantage is that this would only apply to the new hires. It's an incentive to hire new teachers into these vacancies, and there are a bunch of teachers, a lot of teachers who are already in EC or math positions, who may feel like they're a little bit less valued because we're going out and providing incentives. But during the middle of the school year, it's just very, very difficult to recruit teachers during the middle of the year. At the, during the normal changeover, during the regular school year, we do a pretty good job of filling those positions at the beginning of the year. But as they turn over, or if they turn over during the year, those positions are very difficult to fill. With that, again, the cost is $15,918.75. That's an estimated cost. We don't know how many vacancies we'll have this spring. We currently have three EC vacancies and one math. So if we were to implement it, we know that we would have at least those four. And I would be glad to take any questions.
Mr. Foster, I think we're heading down the right path on this. I know personally tonight, I'm not prepared to necessarily vote on. I'd like to discuss it more in committee and give us a little more time to look into it and ask you questions and stuff like that.
I know here in the middle of the year, I can understand $250 a month, or whatever that figure was, to recruit. But I'm thinking when, if we approve this and start a new school year and you're trying to recruit, are you against offering a new person $2,500 upfront versus a monthly payment?
I'm not against it. I, there are different ways that we can administer it. One of the things that I have seen happen in the past, when I worked in a previous district, was that you get the retention value out of it by paying it on a monthly basis. If you pay it upfront, unless you build into your agreement that if you leave early, then you're going to have to repay certain, certain amounts of it. But it can be administered either way.
Well, it would seem to me, particularly younger teachers, that would be a real recruiting item to say, you know, if you're going to move, have to move and pay for those expenses and all that, that would be very helpful for a lot of people, to pay that upfront, even if you do have to put a clause in it.
And, and we do, it's not really an incentive, but we do provide the opportunity for teachers that are coming to us at the beginning of the year to be able to get a supplement advance. And then they just, they don't get as much supplement during that, during their regular payment, but that helps defray some of the moving expenses and that kind of thing.
I think what Mr. Lemon referred to is almost like a moving incentive.
Yeah.
Or signing bonus.
Yeah.
Right, that's one of, yeah.
You know, we have a great school in UNCW right up the road, but how many of our teachers are coming from there locally that don't have to move? Moving across the state, far less, you know, another state, very costly. So.
That's right.
And along the line of course is that with teachers, particularly if they're coming from another country, from highly established states, because they're going to need to go to the mountains, something you won't be, so.
Except to them.
Except to them.
Yeah.
That definitely would be something that we could explore, if we want to call it moving expenses or signing bonus. When I go to job fairs myself, oftentimes the most attractive draw to some folks is when they see a district that was out of state, comes from North Carolina job fairs. And they have a plaque that says, we will give you such and such amount of signings. And there was lines at that table, because they were drawing for that money upfront. So we both would explore monthly, we'd explore the upfront, and, you know, we can, as Mr. Foster said, we can go either way. They can go attractive for those folks to deal with signing positions.
Mr. Foster, you probably remember the guy who went from, was it Wake County to Houston?
Actually, it was Guilford. I worked.
Guilford. And he robbed that area blind doing that. So, so we can.
I'd like to see CTE added onto this, because we do have those construction positions with two vacancies, and they're the hardest of all teachers to find in the state of North Carolina right now. There's a shortage, so it's just unreal.
It makes it impossible.
Yeah.
Mr. Cheers talked to, I think he talked to the person, the FBI in charge of CTE, and actually asked him if he wanted to come teach a course, as we have at, so it's another one of those types of things. You don't think of it often, but it is an important course as well that we need to consider when we're looking at this entire process.
So when you're going through the job fairs, do you go to outstate?
Yeah, a little like.
Yes. Or do we have people doing that? Like, do we have?
Well, we were doing it prior, prior to COVID. But we are, this week, on Friday, we have a virtual job fair with the December graduates of UNCW. And we do a lot of recruiting there, but we also, our analysis has been that we haven't recruited a whole lot of teachers from the mountains here. Now, we can expand that, but even when we were going there, we weren't getting a lot of bang for our buck. But with the virtual fairs, it doesn't cost as much to travel across the state and that kind of thing. So that's one of the things that we're getting, it's kind of like, it's a blessing and a curse, that there are some things that we're learning that can be a blessing to us, and that's, that's one of them, that we, we should be able to recruit more efficiently through some of these virtual job fairs.
Okay, so you're saying that this, in mid-year, is very hard to hire, which I completely think that.
It is.
So where's the turnover happening, and why are the teachers leaving? I mean, is it maternity leave? And what, what type of situations are we looking at for Brunswick County?
Yeah, honestly, the, it hasn't varied much. I thought it was going to be a bigger difference this year than it, than it was last year. A lot of folks have retired, and a lot of that depends on when they get to their retirement capability, whatever month that falls in. And honestly, a lot of folks tend to retire effective March 1st. And the reason, it's a mind, I mean, there's a reason for that, because there's less workdays in February, and you get paid out at your daily rate of pay. So if there are less days in that pay period, then it calculates more pay for you based on your annual leave and so forth. But regardless of that, I think there's a little bit more retirement. I've got some data here that, that shows that our turnover or attrition, I ran some reports regarding our attrition from July 15th to today, versus last year at this time. And they're almost identical numbers. There's 33 teachers in, in one, in this year, and it was 36 teachers last year. They varied a little bit in their areas, in that last year, we had only three EC teachers to turn over during that time. This year, we've had seven. Last year, we had six math positions turn over. This year, we've had four. And the other thing that I would say is, with the December graduates coming out of UNCW, there are right at 100 coming out, but 84 of them are elementary. And, I mean, we need some elementary teachers too. We've got six, six elementary vacancies that we're trying to fill. And we feel like we will be able to fill those with the December graduates. So we're, we're okay on that, but there was only, there's one middle grades math candidate, and I think there are three EC candidates out of the December graduating class at UNCW. You did hit on one other thing, though. We have experienced folks going on leave of absence this year, and that's created some staffing issues for us, because those folks are still on, in a lot of cases, they're still withdrawing salary based on using sick leave and so forth. And generally, we're able to get a sub whenever somebody is using their paid leave. We've done some creative things to cover those classes and have teachers that are teaching extra class during their planning period and paying them extra to do that. But it's stretching some folks a little bit thin. So we're, we're open to suggestions.
What degree of difficulty are you having with substitutions?
We're also having some difficulty with substitutes, and a lot of teacher assistants are stepping up and having to sub in classrooms. And we are in the process of revising our substitute recruitment and hiring process to allow us to be able to recruit and then have some effective substitute teacher training that's done virtually on, with some modules, because we're not able to meet in-group settings and provide a day's worth of professional development to a group of new subs and that type of thing. But yes, we are having some difficulty, and if you talk to any of the teachers, you'll hear that same thing. We did do a push out in July to survey our substitute teachers to find out who were, of them were willing to work with us, because, you know, a lot of our substitutes are retired teachers, and those are in the high-risk category for the coronavirus. And, but we did have over 100 that indicated that they would work with us. We worked with the principals to ask them to put together a list of the subs, because most of them already have some list of subs that they work from, generally that serve their school more than other schools. But we all had, we put all that plan together. We also provided some remote tra, or some training for them in how to do the remote learning, because that was new to a lot of our subs. And having them, basically, it was about six hours of modules that they had to complete in how to do the remote learning, and then also provided them with a day to go to, pick a school, let the principal know that you're coming, pair up with a teacher, and do, walk through a day in the current setting, so that they and do, walk through a day in the current setting, so that they would be better prepared. And we're paying them for the two extra days of subpay to be able to do that. So we've taken some proactive steps, but honestly, all across the state, we're, we're struggling with substitutes.
You know, the questions, is it a pleasure to the board to wait till January to vote on this?
Yes.
Absolutely. At least in my opinion.
So we'll wait and allow the new members, particularly a chance to absorb the information and maybe make some other suggestions too, so.
Okay, so maybe at the committee meeting?
Any other, yeah, we can discuss it again, I guess, and then vote on it in January.
Okay.
I just, you know, I do want to emphasize that I do worry about the teachers who are already in that position.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I just.
I do too.
My heart goes out to them. I mean, they're already there putting the blood, sweat, and tears in, and, you know, it just seems kind of off balance.
Yeah, and the other.
And I, but I get it. I mean, but are there other, there going to be other areas of critical staff hire? In your economy, we're going to have to continue to replicate this. You know, are we going to continue to do this when we see critical needs? Because I understand what you're saying too, when you go to these job fairs or in your previous life, that's a big draw, but I just, I hate it for the teachers who are already in there.
Well, the goal would be to do away with critical needs.
Yes.
For Brunswick County, you know?
Yes.
And drop that.
Yeah, not have to continue to replicate.
Yeah. I just got one question. What degree of input is the existing staff had into the, to the development of this incentive? Was there some input from those folks? Just, you know?
Well, we, we did talk with the Teacher Advisory Committee at the last meeting and asked for their input, and really, we haven't, we haven't received a tremendous amount. I didn't do a survey of the staff or anything of that nature, but we did discuss it in the Teacher Advisory Council meeting last week.
And that's significant how we would like to borrow a lot of our information through that. Teacher Advisory Council, because it is represented for all kinds of schools, and concerns and issues that may be spreading out of schools, they get it through that representative, that representative brings it to the, to the, to the attack.
Gotcha. And I would just want to make sure those folks are completely aware that that's an avenue that they can use to, to get the information that's on their mind, so, so we can understand it as well.
Yes.
The question was raised, as I mean, about if it's just for new hires, for being in like those, and Mr. Foster, they've asked that question, that was just a very important thing, but that was a concern, I would say, just a question.
We did just give the teachers a $500 raise, which now makes us the highest paid teachers in all surrounding areas other than South Carolina, which we can't match just because of the state.
And actually.
The state scales $30,000 off. I mean, it's just.
Well, and actually, we are competitive with, with Ori County at the minimum, for new teachers.
Yeah.
At the top level, though, they, they get way beyond us, but.
Right.
At the beginning level, we're, we're competitive with them. And I think the only county that's higher than us right now in our region is Onslow County. They've gone to a 10% local supplement, which is a little bit higher than what we currently have.
A long drive, though.
That's right. That's right.
We have the beach.
Yeah, that's right.
Right. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is discussion and the announcements by the superintendent or, and/or board members. First item is update on the turf or the baseball field, the drowning baseball field at South Brunswick. Ms. Rutledge?
I'm Sue Rutledge, I'm the Chief of Operations Office. I'm, I'm, we're kind of in the, in the middle of this discussion, so I'll back up a little bit. The baseball field at South, the outfield, it, it does drain very well. So we have done some engineering work to look at what are we going to do there to fix the problem? When we, when we started this, we knew that just replacing the field, repair the field, putting regular sod back down the field would be, that, I mean, that'd be considerable expense. So because of that, I was asked to look at what cost differential would be if we used artificial turf, because we've had no good experience with that since we put it on our football field. So with the help of McGill Engineering, we have done enough engineering work to be able to understand at least an order of magnitude, I say, if I can go to work, between the difference of either repairing the slope or regrading and improving the slope, and, and repairing irrigation, re-sodding, and then on right at the fence, putting in some underground drainage to carry the water away from the field. So that's, that's roughly, including engineering cost project management, the, you know, the whole ball wax, roughly $350,000. To put turf on the baseball field, that's roughly 1.3 million to 1.6 million. So order of magnitude of, to put up the difference, it's, you know, it might be a million dollars, if you ever take a look. It might be a million per. The, the, the cost that gets added into turf, it also has to do with drainage. Because the soil at South Brunswick, and we experienced the same, the same issue at West Brunswick, not at North when we did the football field, but it's a, it's a slow infiltration rate. So because of that, and because artificial turf is considered semi-infiltration, it triggers some, some stormwater management permanent issues. And then that's where you have soil that won't take water very quickly, the way, and because of the way artificial turf fields are designed. And one, one of the best things about the turf field is you can, you can get, you can get a throw trailer, and in two hours, you can, you can play. So because all that water's going somewhere, you, you've got to manage the water. And if it won't infiltrate, that means detention, pond, and, and that's what we have at South. That's what we would have to do back in this baseball field, because we've done enough engineering work to, to know that that's the way we require it. So I, I hope I've given you enough information and, and not, you know, the right amount of information for you to be, to be able to think about this. I don't, I don't need direction today, because if we started either project right now, it would likely not be ready for the baseball season that's upcoming. But, you know, as, in January, February, I would like to have some, some direction from the board, if, if turf is open that we want to consider.
When, when it, when this first arose, and you were talking about the initial work, which is $350,000, what funding source were you considering for that?
I, I could hear part of it, Mr. Lemon.
What, what funding source are you considering or would you use for the $350,000 for this problem?
If we do sign improvement out of the capital athletic leadership.
So if, if the board was to approve the million three to do the whole field in relation to turf, you could use the 350 you were going to take out of sight before we had to seek another source for the rest, correct?
I'm going to defer that, that, that to Miss Kay. It always works better for me if I have her answer to any questions.
Well, I'm giving her a zero today because she's not here.
For sign improvement, but past that, the turf front, and whether that link can get redirected, I don't know.
There she is.
That mic is not on. If you turn that mic off, she'll be able to talk to you.
Other side of the system. Mr. Green's fine.
Got me.
This online instruction is tough. There you have an example right there.
On the side of the little stick picking up behind the phone.
There she is.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I have to, that's a report from me, but I suspect that there is not 350,000 in, in that line item that Sue was referring to, so we would most likely need to appropriate some of that out of fund balance. We're out of the contingency at the county.
See. Got you.
Did you hear?
Yeah, we, we heard you.
My biggest question is, up to this point, what has been done to try to remediate the water problems?
We, we have cleaned some ditches in the past. In the past two years, we haven't done much of anything. What we've done to try to remedy it before was just clean those ditches and get that water to flow, but the problem there is just, is just the infiltration. That's one problem. The other is the, the, because we have had it surveyed, we know that it's not going to improve until we change the grade on the field, and.
Being that I live in the warm spring, I'm pretty well versed in the poor soil conditions and poor stormwater condition there. If we went into the $350,000 project, I'll say, which is new drainage and all that, because up to this point, we've basically just done maintenance on the existing stormwater infrastructure there.
That's right.
Or, or, whatever infrastructure is there.
Yeah.
If we did the $350,000 project, right now, are you confident that would fix the stormwater problem?
Yes.
Or is that kind of like a, an option that was given to us that really wasn't an option? Because I don't, I don't engineer sometimes to work.
Yeah, no, I. As the, I asked the engineer, you know, if we do this, is this, is this a fix? And it is a fix, but that's, that's expensive fix.
No kidding.
But it will work. And so what, that means there'll be no, you know, we'll have to do some grading in the infield, most likely start there, do grade in all of the outfield, get out to, you know, put up new fence, then outside the fence, put in some subsurface drainage and some pipe, and to not, not go to a pond, but get the water away from the edge of the field, and let it infiltrate further away from the field than right at the edges.
Okay, and they're confident that the water will run, how much do they have to absorb behind the top of the fence, as soon as you speak, yeah?
Right. Yeah, you know, I mean, would that be like a, would, would that be like a turf field? No, but it would be, it would be an improved, an improved situation over what's there now. But it, it's still a grass field, but that's what we have everywhere else.
But that would fix the problem where they have to play games other places and practice in the gymnasium and stuff like that?
Yeah.
You know, $350,000 is a lot of money, but it's, sure is like a lot less than 1.3 million.
Yeah, that, that leads me to want, you know, the 1.3 million figure, that, that's the artificial turf figure, correct?
That's correct.
And is that in place at other schools? No. Okay. So my, my only concern there is how long would it be? You know, we've had a water issue in the county for a while. We've had how many hurricanes come through. So, you know, we, we understand it's really an issue countywide, but going with this artificial turf kind of scares me. How long would it be before the other schools, you know, hey, we, we, we need to do this too, or, you know, because that's a lot of money. I've studied artificial turf. There's some studies and things online about that. And if we wound up having to do that at multiple locations in time, that would be a bit of a problem for the budget.
I just think it's a, the artificial turf that on the field serves several purposes. It does five different sports. The cost because of the square footage was only half a million, I believe, at the, right? Or somewhere a little, little bit out with drainage, because we have five.
Oh, it was, it was a million. It was a million a piece.
It is a million.
About a million?
Yeah, and the baseball field is bigger.
Right, it's bigger. If only we had five sports on it, we have.
That's right.
And then only thing, girls' sport, which is other column we had, which is the board have eventually, by the way, we looked at unequal facilities between the female and male sports, and then actual turf allows us to put everybody on one field, giving them equal facilities. I don't believe we have that here even then, because the female sports go on softball fields, which is a separate facility anymore.
That, that's correct.
None of this.
The other schools, though. That's, we're just talking about quotation for South Brunswick.
Right.
Okay.
And we would have to find the one, or in this case, it was not in the account.
So my question, if you, if we go to the 350,000, is that a permanent fix? Is the engineer confident that that will permanently fix it?
That'll fix it. That'll fix it is, I mean, that'll fix it so that it will be, you know, you'd have comparable drainage and playability like at, like, like you do at West Brunswick.
Yeah.
I had a conversation with one of the engineers you've been working with, and he told me he would not guarantee that 100%, that that would fix it.
And so I also, yesterday, called the AD at South.
Yep.
Justin Garza, and he rode out on the gator and showed me pictures of the field. I have them here on my phone. It's a mess. And he, and so I had him to call the baseball coach and ask him, over the years, has it gotten worse? He did clarify that it has gotten much worse over the years. And he said his concern was top dressing the field always helps initially soak up water, that it's a Band-Aid. They're afraid it will not permanently fix the problem. And he did verify that practices have been missed due to the water, and games over the years have had to be completely canceled and rescheduled. And he does have issues with moving the kids indoors for practice, which is not viable option for baseball, unless you're in the batting cage. So I just wanted to let people know that I did reach out to the AD at South.
Yes, ma'am.
And they are concerned that it won't be a permanent fix.
Just a random question. How far, I've not been out to South in, in a while. How far is the, the ball field to the public transportation area, as far as the DOT maintain right of way?
Uh, uh.
Okay.
The softball field is closer to the.
Yeah, softball field is closer. Baseball field's probably, probably, I don't know, it's probably a good 100 feet.
That leads me to ask, did we talk with DOT as well to see what they, they would have to say about cleared their areas? I know they've been out in the county doing different things.
No, sir. Their, their, their ditch is higher.
Okay.
Than our field. And so we've got to take water, we got to take water back towards the center field and the left field area.
Okay.
When Ms. Monocle was talking about top dress in the field, that was done previously, but this would be a complete regrading of it, right?
It would.
Okay.
Yeah, the, and, and, and Mr. Lemon, I, I'll talk to, I'll talk to McGill again and be sure that, you know, if, if we spend 350, that, that we're going to have, that we're going to have adequate, or adequate drainage as, as, as well as we can have on a grass field. The, the, the issue there at South is that, that field's just in a, you know, it's in a low spot.
A hole.
Yeah. And the football field is, it's about the same grade, but it had, it had some, a little bit better natural drainage out towards the practice field where the football field was. The baseball field's kind of, it's kind of hemmed in. And so.
You guys have a maintenance issue there, did you not?
It's a tough spot.
You guys have taken over maintenance on that field?
Over the, on the.
Over at South, and you guys have a maintenance issue there, where it wasn't maintained for a couple of years ago?
Uh, no, we work with the county. No, we work with the county. Yeah, the county, the county and us, you know, we, we do fine, and, and they, they help us out. They mow the field, top dress the field during the, during the, while the season's going on.
I'm committed to fixing whatever the problem is. I just want to make sure we're being smart with our money going forward and that we are, we're 100% addressing the problem, and it might not hurt to have the engineers come so we can ask them questions directly. I, I trust Ms. Rutledge, but I think sometimes we put her on the spot with our questions that she may not have the answers to. But if we could speak to whoever the representative from McGill is, and we can ask him those hard questions.
Can we maybe arrange that for them, make community, help with?
Sure. Yeah, I'm trying to do that.
To have, if you have the opportunity to ask questions, for real questions, if you could.
Yeah, and I appreciate all the work you put into this and, and your staff, and like I said, I, I think I speak with the other folks on this board, is, you know, we want to make this right, for sure, but we want to make sure we're making it right and being smart with our money at the same time.
I think we'd like to do this right the first time.
Yeah, I mean, they, they've, they've had, they've had a problem there for a while, and, and we want to, we want to do it right the first time, too. You know, they, we'd like to make sure that they have the, the same playing surface that everybody else does.
I echo Steve. We're committed to getting them fixed up.
Thank you, Ms. Rutledge.
Thank you.
Dr. Oats, you have?
Just real quick, as you can see, there are many, many times are listed on the 15th, we'll definitely inform you of that time in the next, for the board meeting. Just quickly, I also like to give the board hand and public just a rundown on where we are with COVID. That's a question I get all the time, folks call, email, you know, about what are we gonna do? Rules swirl, not closing schools and all that kind of stuff. So I just want to make sure everyone, individuals, all of them, are aware that there is no indication that I, that I will open any COVID. And as far as COVID is concerned, I'm sure you've already reviewed our COVID dashboard that we have on our district website. It's been there for a while, just to provide some very transparent information per school. Since September 21st, we have had 66 total positive cases in our school district. As of today, there are 10 positive active cases with 140 folks quarantined, that includes students and staff and staff. In my estimation, that's a relatively low number compared to the numbers for the county. They are continuing to go up in the county, and as I just stated, we have 10 active cases and 140 quarantined, so in fact, we are, I would consider us in good shape. We still stress for our staff members to wear their mask while they're in the buildings, and it doesn't make it not effective for them. Also, we're washing their hands and sanitizing the buildings, and just as many of our schools now have, have looked the best that they have looked in years. And the pluses of the schools is definitely attesting to the hard work that our operations folks, in particular, our custodians in the school, put forth each and every day, not just keep the school looking good, but making sure that the folks in the, in the school are safe. So we are definitely encouraging people to continue with that. Secondly, the last, and secondly, and last, and I want to just bring to your attention, is that we will be having our mid-year graduation, this is the second time we've had our mid-year graduation, on December 18th. They will take place at each individual high school, and we will get you more information on that. The individual high schools are developing a plan for their mid-year graduations to be consistent with all executive orders that have been given to us by the state. So I just want to make sure you're aware of that. I know it's only a dinner, but we can definitely celebrate with those students who have worked hard and are able to graduate early at the mid-year graduation. And by note of that, as we do graduation, I was talking to Mr. Cheers today, and remember, one of the initiatives that I was definitely looking at since I've been teaching, how we find ways to decrease our dropout rate. We started the Virtual Academy, and we had one student come to us several months ago to drop out. Student came, left their, their home, high school, come to the, to the office to receive paperwork so they could drop out of high school. We convinced that parent and that student to go in our Virtual Academy, that student is now permitted all graduate requirements for, as of today. So it is, it is a mechanism that we can use to deter a lot of our students from dropping out, and by the evidence of this student, it does work. We are looking at, if we have any other situations like that, to have those students take that route, so we have some of these.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
You have a motion to go to close session?
Sir.
I have a motion by Mr. Barger. We have a second. Second by Ms. Mobbit. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved.